Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, January 9, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Crosstalk).
There's nothing under general this evening, item four. I'll move to item five, any committee correspondence to council at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence, moving on to public comment. Only two folks have signed up to speak here this evening, and that is Kelly Archer. And for those that are coming up to speak, please speak directly into the microphones. State your name and your address for the record, please. And please keep your comments to three minutes.
I am Kelly Archer of 185 Bradley Street, City Administrator Canrath. I want to thank you for hiring Emily Cole Prescott as the new city planner of Saco. I have had the pleasure of working with her as a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission and the ZORs Committee, as well as witnessing and being an active participant in planning board meetings under her previous apolitical style as the city planner. I found her extremely professional, responsive, others, and followed a strict code of ethics. I look forward to Ms. Prescott, her staff, and the planning board addressing the unfinished business of amendments, strengthening and aligning Saco's ordinances to the comp plan, and bringing applications and approvals with conditions into compliance. Mr. Mayor, even though the charter states that you have unilateral control over city appointments, I beseech you to lean on your trusted advisors, these seven councilors, prior to making certain controversial appointments and placing them on the agenda. And lastly, to you, Counselor Hatch, as your constituent, I am opposed to the confirmation of Mr. Hamblin to the planning board based upon my letter and its questions and findings on record presented to the council earlier today. Please vote no on this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Jane Karen.
My name is Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street. And I was present at the December 19, 2022 Joint Council and School Board Code of Ethics and FOIA training and review of the City of Saco's Code of Ethics, and specifically Sections 3 and 4. I want to share my concerns in reference to the nomination of Bob Hamblin for his seat on the Saco Planning Board. This is number eight consent items on tonight's agenda. Mr. Hamblin is a very respectable citizen, involved in several interests. He's currently the Vice President of the Eastern Trail Alliance, a current member of the Cycle Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and a retired Saco City Planner. Mr. Hamblin's love of nature and commitment to the environment are very commendable. However, I question if Bob Hamblin is the best choice of nominee for his seat on the planning board, for fear there may be numerous conflicts of interest. Opening the City of Saco to any possible conflict is a high risk. I ask this nominee to the planning board be reconsidered since it may open the City of Saco to an increased legal risk. Mr. Hamblin noted on his application an interest in serving on the mayor's Ad Hoc Committee for Coastal Resilience, and this may be the better choice for Mr. Hamblin to help serve the city. I appreciate your time. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. That is it for those that have signed up. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, please come forward and be heard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dan Lasky. I live at 23 Skyline Drive in Saco. I'm here to speak on your nomination of Bob Hamblin. First off, I know that Inga Brown had given you folks a letter that I cannot endorse that any -- it's incredible. So I'm not going to take up too much more time for that. Everything she has to say there is 100% true. My experience that I've had with Bob Hamblin was earlier on back when the Flatley Project was looking to build seven five-story buildings in a residential neighborhood behind the Campbell Hall Center. This was back during the days of the Zoom meetings, and this was on a planning board Zoom meeting. I had -- was going through 200 small pages of information that was coming up for that meeting or whatever, and one of the things I found was a correspondence between Bob Hamblin and Kevin Gerard -- I'm sorry, Kevin Walker, who was Flatley's number one person and was in charge of heading, trying to get the buildings put up. There was quite a bit of opposition to not having that developed, but putting seven five-story buildings. Anyway, Mr. Hamblin had written in there, he was in several different instances, going back and forth with Mr. Walker and other people with the Flatley Corporation. It was almost acting like he was an employee of the Flatley Corporation. And one of the things, this is right on the city's website, in a correspondence between Mr. Hamblin and Kevin Walker, was they were discussing, Mr. Walker wanted to have something done, and Bob Hamblin said that, "Don't worry, he will fight," use the word "fight," the neighborhoods, the neighbors. I don't know Bob Hamblin that well. I don't actually really know him that much at all, except my correspondence and stuff with him when he was with the city. No one with that attitude should be on that board. That person's there to represent me, you, and everyone else, and also work to the folks that are trying to do things in the city. It should not -- John Gerard, which was the head of the planning board at the time, said, you know, "That's very, it was super unprofessional." I agree 100%. There's no city employee who should be there representing us, making statements like that against the citizens of the City of Saco. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard.
My name is Mary Elizabeth Carolyn. I live at 54th Street. I was here at a council meeting several months ago, where you, the mayor, got up and spoke to the council. Prior to you speaking to the council, I sat here and watched you listen to some people talk about the infrastructure and how the infrastructure was suffering, and if we keep developing without taking care of our infrastructure, we're going to be behind the eight ball, and we're going to have a lot of problems. During that time, you stood there, and you were making little subtle gestures with your eyes. As a person that has served in towns, not this town, but other towns, someone once said to me, "As a leader, you have to lead by example, and all of you are leaders. You need to lead by example. You need to set aside your own thoughts about a particular topic, listen to what people have to say, and stand behind what they have, and try to do your best to serve the people of the City of Saco." I was very disappointed with you, Mayor, when you were rolling your eyes. I understand it's tough to sit there and listen to some people yammer on about stuff that you don't particularly believe in, but you are representing the City of Saco, and I really would like it if you all would set aside any of your personal thoughts or beliefs and listen to the city people that are asking you to serve them the way they want to be served. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard.
I'm Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road in Ward 1. Mayor Doyle, city councilors, you've received my written email sent earlier today that outlines my alarm and concern about Mr. Mayor, your nomination of Mr. Hamblin to the planning board. I want to be very clear that none of my comments in my email are personal in nature, but rather solely focused on the nominee's public track record of some of his concerning communication issues in his previous role as city planner, a role that he only left one and a half years ago. It is incomprehensible to me that any counselor who attended the last council meeting on December 19, where City Attorney Murphy did his annual review of ethics and FOIA, and that you could vote after attending that meeting, that anyone could have voted in the affirmative for this nomination. As outlined in my email to you, the conflicts of interest and the appearance of the conflicts of interest that this potential confirmation could create is really breathtaking. And as I stated in my letter, there are many projects and proposals that the nominee helps support and lead through the city application and permitting process that will surely come back to the planning board in some shape or form, many projects that the nominee knows intimately from his prior advocacy or engagement with, and these will return to the planning board as well. The nominee's prior knowledge as a staffer includes off-the-record understandings, political insider conflicts, and legal conflicts with multiple narratives, and relevancy to the planning office. And I'm very, very alarmed at this nomination. Moreover, I find your nomination, Mr. Mayor, of Mr. Hamblin to replace the board opening left by Ryan Prescott, a choice that is openly, whether intentional or not, disrespectful and at best tone deaf toward our new city planner as she embarks on her new tenure. Your nomination choice is counterproductive and certainly not in the best interest of our city, in my opinion, no matter how you want to present it or spin it. And I'd like to stand by the comments that I made in my email. Let's not forget what City Attorney Murphy said at the December 19 meeting. He said, and I quote, "The bottom line on ethics is you will know it when you are getting close to the line. It's not a surprise. You'll feel it. You'll know it. There's usually very little question. You'll know it in your heart if you're up to the line." He commended the city for having an aspirational document on ethics, and that's really something we all can be proud of. This is what we believe in Saco about ethics. I urge the council to not confirm this nomination, and I look forward to your discussion on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard. With nobody else seeking recognition, moving on from public comment to item seven, approval of the minutes for December 19, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Purdy, any discussion on the minutes for December 19, 2022? See, no discussion. Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item eight, consent items, and it's item A, confirm mayor's appointment to the planning board of Bob Hamblin. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Counselor Hatch?
Yes, I'd like to request that we remove it from consent to action, please.
I mean, we can do that, but it's the only item under the consent agenda, so you could bring it to the floor and just discuss it that way, but we can move it if that's what you would like to do.
Let's move it, please.
Okay. Any objection to moving the consent agenda, item A, to the action items? So there is nothing on the consent agenda this evening. That brings us to the action items, and that is item A, confirm mayor's appointment to the planning board of Bob Hamblin, and that is assigned to -- it's on page three in your packet, and assigned to Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning board is comprised of seven members appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council for three-year terms. Each commission member shall be a resident of the city, serve without compensation, and must meet the qualifications outlined in subsection 434 of the city's administrative code. Mayor Doyle has recommended Bob Hamblin to be appointed to the planning board to fill a vacancy with a term from January 9, 2023, to May 1, 2024. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the mayor's appointment of Bob Hamblin to the planning board from January 9, 2023, to May 1, 2024, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. This is, I've had challenges with planning board appointments in the past, but this is the one that conflicts me the most. I think that the public comment we heard about Mr. Hamblin's contributions to the community are, I agree with, are very, very good, very well placed. I think in his non-planner role, Bob has shown a significant amount of commitment to the community. But his appointment to the planning board really concerns me on multiple levels. And first and foremost, you know, the ever-present issue of conflict of interest, real or imagined, I think is troublesome. I'm also somewhat concerned about his past communications and alleged behaviors with citizens and neighbors reflected during his city planner role. I actually have personal observations to add to that narrative. And I think, more importantly, I am extremely concerned, as I look at having experienced managing staff and teams of people, the potential detrimental impact that this appointee's planning board role would have on the performance of our new city planner, and I'm really concerned about that. However, given the sensitive nature of these, what I would view as primarily employee-related points of discussion, I would prefer to engage in this discussion within a non-public forum such as an executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I think at this point, you know, we're all well aware of how this process works, where we have the mayor that appoints, and council is, the role is confirmation. But it's troubled me for some time, really my entire time on council, that these appointments are lumped into consent agenda, because there's an assumption that there's consent to move whatever the applicant or the individual may be forward. The whole point of consent is that they're mundane items, maybe a license that is commonplace that we don't have questions on. So, I mean, there's that. But I've always viewed the role of council as, again, mayor's appointment. He could, to be honest, he could appoint, or she could appoint a donkey for all, I mean, if that's the prerogative, you know. But for council, our role is to ensure that these appointments are reasonable, number one, and in the best interest of the city. So, I mean, I think we've heard from the public, we've received communications. I personally have received some private conversations. Surprisingly, it included developers themselves in this community and surrounding communities that had concerns, again, real or imagined. So for me, you know, I think that while on the surface, Mr. Hamblin certainly has the experience to be involved in land use planning as a planning board member, and I'm aware of that occurring in other communities where a former planner or a former city administrator from a different community might partake in that. But given the recent employment by the City of Saco, for 20-plus years where you undoubtedly come into situations, you make friends, you make foes, it's just like us, I'm sure we have experienced that, to then be put into a judicial review body, the perception, whether, again, real or imagined, the perception is real. That's the reality of it. And that's my concern from a city councillor, is that we would be appointing somebody that, again, real or imagined, may do us, the city, more harm than good, with people questioning whether that individual is making a fair judgment. And I think, you know, I generally believe in giving people the benefit of the doubt. I think that, you know, and I've never had any bad interactions with Mr. Hamblin, I think that he likely would, but we also all are human and do have our biases. So there's that concern from my perspective. I mean, this isn't a situation where it has to be Mr. Hamblin. It could be anybody else in this community. I mean, at one point, I do recall, Mr. Mayor, you saying that we needed new blood and new people. Well, we're hiring or we're appointing a former city employee. I can remember not too long ago where a former city administrator requested to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I had issues with that at the time. For one, he would now be an advisory board member to the staff member that he hired. The optics are bad. And so in this case, I view this very similar. I mean, the only thing potentially worse optics-wise would probably be putting a developer themselves on the planning board. And again, this is not personal against Mr. Hamblin, it's the reality to the public and developers out there that are hoping to get a fair shake. The perception is always going to, and rightfully so. I would too, to be honest, I'm human. I'd say, "Well, did I really get a fair deal, or was this, you know, did he have something out to get me?" So, again, I guess I would agree with Counselor Hatch. I know there are others that may have personal experience that would like to reveal that to council, and so I would move to table this appointment with the anticipation that we would have an executive session so those items could be revealed to us. Thank you.
Is there a second to table?
Second.
Counselor Hatch, on the motion to table, there is no discussion. Roll call vote on the motion to table. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy? Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to table passes 4-3 on the item A, confirming mayor's appointment to the planning board. That brings us to item B on the agenda, and that is on page five, which was item A, became item B, and that is a final reading, Chapter 81, Request to Purchase City-Owned Property at 24 Lincoln Road. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Garrett Harmon, owner of the property at 41 Lincoln Road, tax map 101, Lot 37-1, submitted a request for the planning board and city council to consider selling the neighboring parcel to the southwest, 24 Lincoln Road, tax map 101, Lot 35, to him, so he can preserve the open space abutting his property. The planning board found that the subject property lacks potential for public uses, and on November 15, 2022, voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation of this request to the city council. City council held its first reading on December 5 and its public hearing on December 19. Section 81-2C of Saco City Code states that the council shall determine the method of sale if the council decides to offer any city-owned property for sale. Regardless of the method of sale, notice shall be sent to all abutters. Saco's assessor believes that the property was acquired by the city in the late 1970s or early 1980s because of the failure of the previous owner to pay taxes. Section 81-2D of Saco City Code states that the proceeds from the sale of tax-acquired properties shall be applied to the balance of the unpaid taxes and any unpaid fees, interest, and lien fees for the property. Any additional funds received will be deposited as directed by the city council. I move to approve the final reading of the Chapter 81, Request to Purchase City-Owned Property at 24 Lincoln Road, map 101, Lot 35, and to further authorize the city administrator to execute all necessary documentation to sell 24 Lincoln Road to Garrett Harmon for the purpose of land preservation and with deed restrictions to limit future development.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So, again, as I said several weeks ago, in support of the sale or disposition of the land, I mean, to me, having looked at this and gone up there, there's very little value to the city retaining it, you know. However, you know, I do have a strong desire to follow the city code as laid out in Chapter 81. So to date, and I believe I've asked for it, and it may have gotten, you know, lost along the way in the several weeks in between, but we really have no clear understanding of what the value of this property is. So we're tasked here with selling something that we don't have a price on, that we haven't arrived at a price on. So, I don't know. I mean, I also, I believe that when you read that section of the code, it's a bit vague, whereas are we even allowed to sell something directly to an individual? And I've gone through probably at least 10 of these in the past, and in the past, we've just said, we've identified somebody and said, "Yay, we like them." And that's been my concern, is it goes back to the perception and optics of things. So, I mean, the way this motion is laid out, we're basically authorizing the administrator to come up with a price and sell it to this individual, which I have concerns with, not that I think anybody else will be interested in it, but I think that the appropriate process is to go through a sealed bid process, and we at least have the minimum assessed value of the land as an opening bid, which I believe is $4,400. So I guess I would amend the motion to strike to sell, well, to sell 24 Lincoln Road can remain, but I would strike to Garrett Harmon and replace that with buy sealed bid with a minimum of $4,400 for the purpose of land preservation and with deed restrictions to limit further development, followed by proceeds from the sale of 24 Lincoln Road will be designated by council at a later date, because, again, as code states, it's council that designates where these funds go, and we haven't had that discussion, and certainly not looking to hold up the sale tonight.
Counselor Johnston has made an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment? And again, I would just ask if you have amendments in the future, please make sure, not that they don't come on the fly, but please do make sure that you get them in in advance.
That's understandable, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, I am talking, Mr. Johnston. Thank you very much. Please excuse me. I have the floor. Don't worry, I'll come back to you. As I understand, things come back or things come up during meetings, that's not troublesome. But if you know you're going to make an amendment in the future, please forward that. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
By Counselor McPhail, and that is to, can you repeat the motion one more time, Counselor Johnston?
To strike Garrett Harmon.
To strike Garrett Harmon. Replace that by sealed bid with a minimum of $4,400. I'd leave everything else. At the end of development, I would add proceeds from the sale of 24 Lincoln Road will be designated by council at a later date.
City Administrator, Canrath, did you get that? Councillor Johnston?
Are we good with striking Garrett Harmon? That portion of the motion?
City Administrator has taken into account your motion in its entirety.
Okay. So, are we good?
You had asked to speak.
We have it on.
Oh, you're giving me an opportunity to speak. No, it's fine, Mr. Mayor. I would just add that while you may run the meeting, you do not have the purview over amendments on the floor. And had I had this prepared prior to late this afternoon, when I was rereading and cross-checking Chapter 81, I would have provided that. I didn't do this to catch you off-guard or any of the councillors off-guard. I literally came up with this 20 minutes before jumping in a shower to put this fancy suit on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnston. Please don't take this personally. I was just pointing out that if folks do have amendments, to get them in as soon as possible. Thank you. With that, on the amendment only, the amendment to strike Garrett Harmon and then create the proceeds to be determined at a later date with the minimum amount of $4,400 by sealed bid on the amendment only. Any further discussion? With no further discussion, a roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
No.
Councillor Gunn?
No.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes, the amendment passes five-two. Back to the main motion now as amended. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? So, the main motion as amended would read, I move to approve the final reading, Chapter 81, Request to Purchase City-Owned Property at 24 Lincoln Road, map 101, Lot 35, and to further authorize the city administrator to execute all necessary documentation to sell 24 Lincoln Road by sealed bid process with a minimum amount of $4,400 for the purposes of land preservation with deed restrictions to limit future development and for the council to decide later on the, where the funds go. Something of that nature in the end. That's what we're voting on. So, any further discussion? Roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to page six, item B, Public Hearing, Amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Appendices. Councillor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, Maine Municipal Association presents municipalities with new appendixes for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and adopted. The staff recommends approval of 2022, 2023, General Assistance Ornances, Appendixes A through H. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Berman. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? On opening the public hearing, roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to open the public hearing at 7:04 PM. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Councillor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the final reading for January 23rd, 2023.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Hatch. Any discussion on closing the public hearing and setting final reading? Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge the work that the general administrator, sorry, the GA Administrator, Ms. Maynard, did in preparing answers to some of my questions. It was striking to look at the change in rental prices between the 2020, 2021 survey and the 2022 survey with both prices gone up and the number of units gone down. And also, while the general assistance maximums would cover some of the available units, they often didn't make it to the median unit and certainly wouldn't cover all the units available. And so, I appreciate her efforts and have come to the conclusion that our GA limits may not be sufficient to cover the actual rental prices in Saco. And we'll be making a motion at the next meeting to move our limits towards the Portland metro area limits. I just wanted to make counsel aware.
Thank you, Councillor Berman. Any further discussion? On closing the public hearing, roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero at 7:05 PM. That brings us to item, excuse me, page 24, item C, A Public Hearing Renewal Application for Special Entertainment Permit, RW Events LLC. Councillor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beth Austin, doing business as RW Events LLC, has applied for renewal of the establishment's special entertainment permit. This permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised a public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, subsection 93, Tag 2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councillor Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor McFail to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to open the public hearing at 7:06 PM. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard.
Hello, Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road, Ward 1. Councillors, I believe you probably have received my email related to this item. I had posed some questions, and I'm hoping that they could potentially be answered during your discussion or with input from staff. I am just simply following up on the compliance aspect and oversight to a contract zone project. I, again, am asking that the city consider, that the council consider an administrative fee for compliance and oversight so that we can ensure that these items are fulfilled. I did not do any background or research on this project, so my questions are in earnest. So, I'm looking for some clarification from council and from staff. So, I'm only simply asking from the amended conditions of approval if the requirement for the public bathrooms were indeed completed. I'm looking for an update on that. And I'm also just making sure that all of the required permits, as listed for you, have been met and that a separate permit for each of the self-sponsored event was secured. I'm also just looking for some updates on how many self-sponsored events. River Winds Estate did hold this year and last year. Just trying to understand the project better for compliance and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. Nobody else seeking recognition? Councillor Archer?
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Beth Austin, doing business as RW Events LLC, for a special entertainment permit for events as per the current Contract Zone Agreement, and said permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor McFail. Any discussion? Councillor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council's aware, this email submitted by Ms. Brown came in earlier today, so it's understandable that we had not had a time to respond. I do want to recognize the difference between this permit and the Contract Zone Amendment are two separate items, so I'll still be voting in the affirmative to allow this, but I would like a reasonable time, a response to Ms. Brown on these items in a reasonable time. But again, I do recognize that these are two different, separate items, a permit and a Contract Zone Amendment, so I do not want to uphold the permit based on something that's related to something else, but Ms. Brown does deserve a response from the city in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Canrath, can you respond to the questions posed by Ms. Brown regarding the Contract Zone?
We'll work with the appropriate departments.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. I would appreciate those responses, but specifically just for my own understanding, could we get, I think I asked last year this came up, I clearly didn't leave here understanding whether these bathrooms have to be actual bathrooms or a trailer. I know there's a whole bunch of state law, city law. I just would like to fully understand it, just because it kind of seems like a loophole to me personally. But, so, if we could have that weighed in, whoever, whether it be code and/or the state, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Canrath, can you include that in your response? Thank you. Any further discussion? On this item, roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero at 7:11 PM. That brings us to page 23, item D, One Reading, Petition for City Acceptance of New Public Street, Samuel Marshall Drive. Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aaron Shields of Design Build Associates of Maine Incorporated requests city acceptance of a new public street, Samuel Marshall Drive, in accordance with Chapter 186 of Saco City Code, city acceptance of improvements. City Attorney Tim Murphy and City Engineer Joe Laverrier found that, found the as-built plan, Metz and Bound's description, and the attached updated warranty deed to be accurate and acceptable. As discussed at the December 19th council meeting, the city is holding $5,000 in escrow funds to ensure granite monumentation is completed in spring 2023. Planning board voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to city council during their November 15th meeting. I move to accept Samuel Marshall Drive as a city street.
Motion's been made by Councillor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Archer. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor McFail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to page 41, item E, One Reading, Acceptance of Council Rules and Order of Business. Councillor McFail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Article 2, Section 2.0b of the city charter, the council is required to develop its own rules and order of business at the first meeting of newly-elected council each year. Changes were proposed and shared with council at the December 19th, 2022, meeting under new business. The city council hereby approves the recommended changes made to the rules and order of business as identified in Exhibit 1.
Motion's been made by Councillor McFail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Berman. Any discussion? Councillor Berman, then Councillor Hatch. Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the addition of council workshops as subsection 2 under section 8 of city council meetings, and I appreciate the language also, but I would like to suggest an amendment to that language, and I apologize also for not sending it in advance. Came to me just before the meeting. Right now, it reads, "Workshops may be held one Monday per month as needed. Workshops are held in the city hall auditorium." Right there, I want to insert, "around a table with normal parliamentary procedure suspended," comma, "and then proceed with and are open to the public." So, I want to add, "around a table with normal parliamentary procedure suspended between auditorium and are open to the public."
City Administrator Canrath?
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Berman, just one question. When you say around the table, we have some, if we want this to be televised, we do have some restrictions as far as the room and the cameras and the angles, and Andrew and Emily can speak more of this. The easiest way to do this would be when we set up for a joint meeting, that we have the tables in front of the dais and we face each other that way. That would be the easiest way to pick things up as far as on camera for communications. If you wanted to do a round table, sort of in the middle of the room, Andrew or Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's going to be more challenging if we want this televised in a normal manner. So, just be mindful of that. And if you'd like one of the comm staff to come up to say more on that, we could do that, that too.
Sure, that'd be great.
We actually put together a quick PowerPoint with a rendering to help you, not like a rendering you'll see from the wastewater treatment plant, but a PowerPoint one.
Were you anticipating this question? That's really good.
So, while I get this going, I'll just mention that as City Administrator Canrath said, moving things in the middle of the room does become much more challenging. We'll show you in this presentation sort of what the limitations are and what we can make available to you, but I think we're going to be able to come to a solution that gets what you're going for. Just one moment.
You were incredibly prepared tonight, I just want to say. That's really impressive.
I don't get to be here too often, so I want to do it right.
Just for, I'll second it for this purpose.
The acceptance of council rules and order of business was presented by Councillor McFail and seconded by Councillor Berman. The amendment is, has not been seconded, to my knowledge. Let me check my notes here. The amendment has not been seconded. Is there a second to the amendment? Second by Councillor Archer.
All righty, so here on the screens, you'll see the CM-colored boxes are where the microphones come from. There are one under each side of your tables. Each side of the dais, there's one underneath Mayor Doyle's position and one underneath where I'm standing. So, if we were to try to orient ourselves in the center of the room, you're going to end up with facilities having to do additional work each week in order to reorganize the room and run wires and then make sure there are no trip hazards. It's not going to be an optimal setup. So, this is what we have now with the current dais, and what we were thinking was something along, creating a large rectangle in front of the dais, which, as you can see through the red lines and red circles, you'll have enough microphones so that importantly, people at home can hear and see what is happening. This presentation doesn't really take into account the camera angles, as Brian mentioned. In the center of the room, you'd end up with a lot of backs, more so than fronts. Everything that we've put into this room to this point is sort of oriented toward things happening up here. So, we're always open to changes, but they'd be more significant should you try to go to the center of the room, but I think we can still create the same environment up here.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Councillor Berman?
Sure, and I believe the wording I proposed would be consistent with that setup also, unless the council disagrees.
I think it would be.
On the amendment only, Councillor Archer?
So, so... Sure, so I'm not sure how audible that was for the live stream, and that is sort of one of the points to be made here. We would have to get microphone equipment out there, and that is possible, but that might mean purchasing new equipment, which isn't in the budget at the moment, but that could be worked through minor equipment.
I would love to have that on, on stage, on the other. I would need to put the amendment for the microphone.
I just want to clarify also, we, there is, we are unanimous that we want this televised, right? Because they used to not be televised. So, I think there is interest from everyone in having it televised, correct?
Yes, at least from me.
Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor Johnston.
Well, as you've heard me say before, I'm far from a techie. I barely get the computer to work most of the time, but what happens, or could we just turn this dais and that dais this way and that way, the mayor's position stays the same, and then that goes to the end, and then council is staring at each other, and the public is still where they are? Is that doable? Because that seems like an easier...
That would be doable. We could definitely turn these in, and then to speak to being able to see each other, I understand down the line it's not easy. With the setup that we do for joint meetings, we could position four of the counselors on this side facing in toward the other four. So, there are options, and both are definitely achievable, and would sort of, turning this in is doable as well, Counselor Johnston.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as I, to reflect on some comments I made at the last meeting, my big thing about going back to having workshops, to Counsel Archer's point and others' point, was that we're basically sitting, not only sitting basically in the round or in the square, however you want to do it, but also, so it is basically a public version of pretty much what we do in executive session, which is a free-flowing conversation about whatever the topic is. Situation being as it is, we're facing this way, we are allowed only by our code and charter to address the chair, not each other. So, having a free-form conversation when we're up here, it's literally not designed, both physically and in the structure of the rules for that. So, the idea of having a table, like you folks say, I don't, whether it's in the middle or in the front, like I said, if it's more, it's in the front, and it's practical, and it's easier for staff to set up, if it's going to catch our audio, it's going to catch our audio. And the important thing to remember is, yes, it's going to be out there for everybody to listen to, and that's why we got rid of it in the first place, is because it wasn't part of the public record, audio record. If it, if our audio record is picked up, that's the most important thing, because unlike a public meeting where there is public comment, the public is not allowed to participate in a workshop, and that's the whole point. So, the public can actually sit and witness us hash out details of something that they as a public can then discuss once it gets to council. So, whether it's back there or up here, if anything, having it up here and move the podium out of the way, everyone can still sit and hear us clearly at the front if we're all going to be mic'd up, because in the old days, when it was in the middle, I remember sometimes going for workshops, and basically it's like the old joke, you know, theater in the round or theater in the square, and nobody had a good seat. There was literally nowhere to sit, because it was just one big dead zone. So, having a table up in front, I think would save us having to move this big apparatus around. Like I said, if we can get us mic'd up, like you said, in the front, sitting right here, we're under the lights, most of us can see, most people at home will be able to see us, you know, who's talking, and there'll be a public record of it anyway, and I think that's going to satisfy all of our concerns. And I'm glad that this will be hopefully added to the amendment for the rules of business, though, to, so we're not up here in our governing phase, that we're down here basically trying to hash things out, and I think it's going to be beneficial for everyone going forward. Thank you.
City Administrator Kenrath.
Yeah, I think the important point is that we want to be able to make eye contact with each other and have a roundtable discussion and not so like this. And I'm 100% confident we can accommodate that through maybe a number of different accommodations. Maybe we try one, maybe we like another one better, but we will be looking at each other, and I'm pretty sure Andrew and Emily feel confident that we can accomplish this in the format, I think suggested in the motion by Counsel Berman.
Any further discussion on the amendment only, amendment only? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm a little concerned about a couple of items that didn't make it in, that I had recommended back in my communication to the council on December 12th. Majority of what I recommended is in the document, so I'm happy with that, but I did make reference to one, updating the board and committee descriptors if needed, and there may not be much there to update, but at least take a peek at that, and making sure that it was clear, the frequency of meetings and dates, which I think is okay. But I also suggested that we create a more robust application process. And I did send out yesterday at noon time to this body, some suggestions about modifications to the existing application process that would simply, I think, provide us a better idea of the candidate's qualifications for the appointment, and make it, I think, a little easier for us to get through some of these appointment confirmations. And included in that recommendation was a reasonable estimate, and likely by perhaps staff and current commission and board members, as to the time commitment it takes to appropriately serve in that capacity. So, when somebody wants to apply to sit on a board or commission, they have not only a description of the duties, but the time commitments involved, because we all know that some of our committee assignments require a significant amount of personal volunteer time outside of the meeting form. So, I could be wrong, but I don't see that information working its way into the rules and order of business document. I had intended that it would maybe enter into Section 14 with qualifications. And again, I don't want to read the thing, because you all got it, but I did send in my thoughts on how to improve that application process, and certainly willing, you know, I'm sure that other council members may have similar suggestions or other suggestions that would enhance that process. So, that's my only concern, is I don't feel like that's been embraced in this document as we're speaking.
City Administrator Kenrath, it's my understanding that staff need time to compile all that and put it together, and you may see it in a future document.
Yeah, and counsel, it was also my understanding that we talked about these other items would be offered and discussed this evening, that they weren't included in the red line version in the packet, because there really wasn't much discussion on these items at our last meeting. And so, when the draft red line version was done, there wasn't really any direction or guidance on these items, and so it wasn't included. And I know we discussed that the other day. So, if you'd like, maybe now is the appropriate time to delve deeper into these issues, and if there is interest in including it, then...
Well, I would, I would be comfortable not having to deal with it now, as long as we knew we could, we could deal with it after the fact, because I would love to have my council colleagues have an opportunity to not only see what I came up with, but agree, disagree, add to it, whatever the case may be. So, I just wanted that to be a starting point for discussion. So, I'm good if we don't specifically address that tonight, but it comes up at a future meeting, once staff has a chance to peruse through it. So, I'll be good with that.
It is going to take some time to compile all the different dates and times and information that's necessary for what you're, for what you're asking to be put into the rules and order of business.
So, can we just be clear about what's being requested, though?
I think it's under, if you look at, I'm not sure which page it starts, but it starts on page 77, Appendix B, Boards and Committees. It sounds like, from the emails and correspondence and verbiage here today, it sounds like Counselor Hatch would like to update the boards and committees to give a more broader description of what those boards and committees do, how much time is reasonably afforded to each board and committee, because obviously some require more time than others, and for all that to be put on, so that when a person puts in a application to be on a board and committee, they know what they're getting themselves into. And Counselor Hatch, if I've missed anything, please...
No, I think, I think you've got it, and it's likely that you could look at these descriptions and feel like they're okay. I just want to take a quick peek at them, and if they need to be embellished. And then in my document yesterday, I suggested that in the actual application form itself online, that we create a link to these descriptions, so that if somebody checks off a box, that that's a committee they'd like to serve on, they can click on a link and see that description, see that time estimate, and if possible, meeting schedule, if it's appropriate. But I think you captured it well, Mayor Doyle.
Thank you. Is there any objection to what Counselor Hatch has put forward? Seeing no objection, City Administrator Kenrath, you believe that's doable?
Yeah, that's fine. We can handle that at the staff level, but I know there's another piece of this in talking about a more robust application process for boards and committees, including resumes, et cetera. We're not talking about that right now. We're talking about just updating the roster.
Well, robust is a, maybe it's too strong of a word, but I think if we look at our current application process and integrate some of those changes that I suggested, I think we'd be fine. I don't want you to reinvent the wheel, but just try to improve the process if you, if you feel it's appropriate.
So, that's a no on requiring resume, et cetera. I mean, does the council want to have a discussion more fully on this topic?
Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd remind us, we still have an amendment on the table, I believe, we haven't voted on, on the workshop format, so I don't want that to get lost. And then I do want to have a discussion about the board applications, and contrary to what the city administrator just said, I think a more robust application procedure is warranted with a resume or CV and a statement of experiences and interests being useful additions to the application procedure.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we dispatch with the amendment, and then we could amend the motion again to direct staff, because it, from my perspective, it seems like the administrator is looking for some direction from us as to Counselor Hatch's amendments that he had given to us. So, if we deal with the amendment, come back, and then I would make an amendment to, again, direct staff to go about implementing Counselor Hatch's suggestions.
So, on the amendment only to, for the workshop protocol, under the rules and order of business, on the amendment only, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment only, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
On the amendment only, passes seven zero. That brings us to another amendment that's been offered, first by Counselor Hatch and second by Counselor Johnston, is how I'm going to accept it, and that is to update the, starting with page 77 in the boards and committees, update the boards and committees for any changes that might need be necessary regarding scheduling, regarding times, regarding description of the, of the time commitment and the actual board and committee itself, with us all knowing that some may not need an update, but just maybe a date, excuse me, a day that they actually meet, and maybe a timeframe. Is that the, is, Counselor Hatch, is that okay? Is that the amendment in totality?
Yes.
Okay. And Counselor Johnston, are you still good with a second?
Yes.
Okay. On the amendment only, any further discussion on the amendment only? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Now, we get to the discussion that was started but has not finished, and that is to talk about the robust addition of some perhaps resumes and so forth. So, Counselor Berman, and then Counselor, Counselor Gunn, Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to flesh out my idea a little bit more, I think right now, the application is a checkmark of which committees you're interested in, and a very limited number of words on why, and I would like to see a little bit more on that, some kind of resume or CV perhaps, and certainly additional space to talk about both qualifications, interests, and why you're a good fit. I think that information will be helpful as we evaluate candidates.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am all for having applicants put out more information, but I'm also sympathetic to, in all due respect to any English teachers out there, that some people are not big on sort of, you know, talking themselves up, and they're confident to have their resumes be for themselves, and perhaps the resume and the current sort of, this is why I'm interested, with just a couple of sentences. And I would take the approach to get a, you know, it'd be kind of an either/or, though. You can either, you know, put a resume out there, answer the way we have it set up now, or if you want to be like some recent applicants, and, you know, write a couple paragraphs or a page, and pretty much, you know, put out a narrative of why you're interested and stuff. I like the idea of being either/or, though, because it allows people that are interested in serving their government to approach it in different ways, though. I mean, remember, at the end of the day, this isn't a job application in the sense that, you know, for a compensated position, though, so it doesn't have the same bar that you would have in private business. Ergo, I'd like it to be accessible to a wide range of people, whether they're comfortable talking about themselves, or they're rather recalcitrant about talking about themselves. I want it to be fair and give people the option, rather than having it all in, though, and I think going either/or in our approach would be fair to everybody, and give us a good cross-section of people overall.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I 100% agree with Counselor Gunn. I mean, certainly I would accept a resume, but I'm personally more interested into why an individual is passionate about serving, which I think is probably better suited, you know, through a narrative of some kind as to why they're interested, but, so the either/or, I'm in favor of. I don't want to be restrictive, suggest a resume. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is there a council that wants to make an amendment? Counsel Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was looking at this, and we talked about, I'm glad to hear council workshop and that format's coming back, I was hoping that it would come back at least once per month, but I do like how it says as needed. However, to advocate for the minority opinion, I would also like to add, after workshops may be held one Monday per month as needed, add, give me one second, or by three members of the city council. And that helps to recognize the minority opinion. Again, this is just a workshop debate item, it's not an action item or anything that can be done, but this would allow for a minority opinion to be heard.
Counsel Archer has made an amendment back to the previously amended section of the rules and order of business regarding workshops. Bear with me as I make it back there, and that is to workshops may be held one Monday per month as needed, or with the approval of the minority of council and three.
Three would be.
Three counselors. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second for the intent of discussion.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Discussion. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for Counsel Archer, but of course addressed to you, would be just physically how that would actually work, though. Would we be having a discussion in new business, and counselors could then basically, sort of like what we do now, if we're having, we're having a discussion on amendment or an action item, where any counselor, we did it tonight, though, we just stopped the debate by a tabling motion, would the actual function of it happen that way? I mean, I'm just, I mean, the principle of it sounds wonderful, but just in terms of how it actually would work in our order of business, that's what I'm curious about.
I believe it's going to be a discussion or a request from three members of council to the city administrator, myself, or deputy mayor, that creates the agenda to create a workshop for an item. Counsel Archer.
Yes, it'd be in tandem on how we do, conduct our special counseling meetings, which is the next item, item number, it would be three. Special meetings may be called by the mayor, city administrator, by four members of the city council. A written notice must be given to city council and media 24 hours, but that's, again, that's for a meeting, not for a workshop. So, it would be done similar to how a special council meeting, where any four counselors can reach out to the city administrator, the mayor, the deputy mayor. So, it would be done in the same format, except I recognize for formal business, you should have a majority, but for a discussion, debate, recognizing the minority opinion is important. So, it would... So it would just be done just like our special council meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Gunn.
So to be clear, for the public's benefit, if that's, if it's in a meeting, it's a majority, we can do anything like that, but outside of a meeting, any minority of counselors, is that what you're basically?
Any, any three, you need to have three.
Any three minority of counselors.
More than a second.
Can bring it. So basically, it's, it happens just out there, not here behind the dais.
Yeah, and that's how our special council meetings are. At any given time, if the city administrator received four emails, four communications from a counselor, it would be on the agenda.
The reason I'm bringing this out there, and so the public understands, is I mean, it may be on the, you know, order of business, but we've never really invoked it, so there, or at least recently enough that anyone really remembers it. So I just wanted to be clear that, you know, if we're going to add this as part of this, the public knows that's not going to happen in the public, though. We're going to, it's going to happen behind the scenes, and then you, as the public, will know, hey, they added something to the agenda, maybe I should, you know, be interested in seeing what they have to say about it. Just, just to make sure I've got your meaning clear.
Nope, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. I think this is a great example of why workshops are needed. I mean, here we are, on the fly, trying to rewrite this. What I will say is that I, unfortunately, I'm really, I know I seconded the amendment, but I think that's too restrictive. I think any one member of council should be able to request a workshop item. I would expect and respect my fellow counselors to not waste our time with things, and I think that's really what would happen. But I don't think that we should, again, make this a gatekeeping system, where any one of us that may just have a roundabout idea of something we want to discuss now has to go and find three counselors, which, like it or not, might not like them. So I think that the best process is to allow a request by a counselor through the city administrator, and the city administrator will dictate when or if that item is allowed on a upcoming workshop. In the event we have a situation where there's a city administrator that won't put something on, then a counselor would go to three counselors to force it. But I don't envision that happening, hopefully.
Are you withdrawing your second for the amendment?
Well.
As proposed?
I'd hear out Counselor Archer first, if he's willing to amend it.
Yes, I would be open to amend it. The reason why I changed three is just to recognize the minority, but also to not just the single, this is where I guess I disagree with Counselor Johnston, but I would amend it down to two, because two would recognize it as a second, how we operate in our meetings. Two counselors, that is, the intent is recognizing that, yes, it is worth hearing, rather than just one. So my original was three, I'd like to amend it down to two, any two counselors.
So we're going to amend the amendment from minority of three counselors down to two counselors. Counselor Johnston, are you okay with that amendment to the amendment?
I can be agreeable to that. I just, I like to think things into the future, and I can't predict when there will be a counselor sitting up here that has no friends, and I kind of would like to protect them. But for this council, I'm agreeable to two.
So on the amendment to the amendment, so to remove three down to two, the amendment to the amendment, discussion, Counselor Berman, then Counselor McPhail. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understand it, any one of us can ask for an item to be placed on the agenda by sending that item to the mayor, city administrator, or deputy mayor, and those requests are taken seriously and put on an upcoming agenda as the schedule allows. And I would hate to see a more restrictive system or a more codified system put in place for the workshops. I think one, in the same method, should be able to request a workshop item. And so while I appreciate kind of the thought behind this amendment, and that it's trying to ensure items can make it to the workshop, I actually think in doing so, we're adding a hurdle or raising the bar to get an item onto the workshop, and for that reason, I have to oppose it.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail.
Just for clarification purposes, so if, let's say, tonight, for example, we still have new business on the agenda, we're bringing items, if there is an item that is falling under new business that you would like to then bring forth into a workshop for more discussion, would that be by roll call vote, making an amendment to it, or would it fall into just a request?
I think it's just a request. I mean, at this point.
Based on the amendment that Counselor Archer is putting forward, I want to clarify, if I were to say, okay, I would like to bring new business, item A, to work, it would not go by roll call vote, it would then go by whatever we're going to amend.
Under new business, we've treated new business as workshops, so we wouldn't be doing a roll call vote in new business to bring something forward.
Correct, but if somebody wanted to bring it back.
If there was multiple counselors that wanted to see something, we could do a workshop as needed for those items. Any further discussion? Counselor Gunn, then Counselor Archer. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do appreciate Counselor Archer's compromise on the idea, but at the same time, since Counselor McPhail's point, though, if we can, you know, sit here as a council and, you know, in new business and say, hey, can we, you know, look at either you or the city administrator and say, let's put this down to workshop and talk about it, that would, the same function as any of us individually going to either you or the city administrator and saying, hey, can this something be on new business in the future? And to Counselor Johnston's point, whether the mayor is amendable to it, or the city administrator is amendable to it, though, that's why we have two people here, though. So if, unless it's a completely bonkers idea, one of these people, either in these two gentlemen, or in the future, anyone holding this position, would invariably let the item at least go to a workshop thing. So I like the idea of it just being the one person, because to Counselor Berman's point, it inadvertently restricts us while we're trying to be more permissive, though, when, at the end of the day, any one of us can suggest something, and we have two people here that basically say, that's a good idea, or it's a waste of our time, though. So I'm content with just, you know, leaving it as it is, and having it just be, to Counselor Johnston's point, one person, though, because it makes it nice and clean procedural-wise for any of us, whether it's new business, whether it's going into workshop, and I think it's just going to be easier for everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Archer, it's my, it's my understanding that what you're trying to do is basically make it so that you don't have a consensus. You don't have to have a consensus to move something to workshop. Whereas new business, we have been acting as a workshop, and if there was consensus, it would be brought forward for the council to review. So by moving away from that consensus system, you're bringing it into the minority of counselors that might want to discuss something further. That's my understanding of what you're trying to do.
That is actually, it is my intent, and that's why I said the voice of the minority, to give them a voice, to give them a chance, because, yes, well, it's all great that one counselor can reach out to three people. I will bring this point up, it's about, it took, it took two years for one counselor to get a item to just talk about the minutes format. It was disregarded, disregarded, disregarded for two years. This is what it brings up, is so that minority, to be honest, it has not applied to me. I'm actually not even speaking on my behalf, but I've seen it happen with this council. I've seen a minority voice not being able to just be heard, not on formal business, just workshop for debate. That's it, to inform, to instruct. The reason why I came up with three as a minority was not to be more proclusive, it's that it allows that availability to that one counselor who hasn't made up their mind to hear someone else's opinion. I brought up three, Nate wanted one, and I was like, well, that's a little too loose. Two was good, but two recognizes how we operate as in a second. The second is to allow us to debate. I wanted three, just with that intent, that hope, that we could convince one, give the opportunity for a counselor to hear another opinion, to help change their mind, because, again, it was kind of, for two years, we'd never talked about the minutes. It was a simple thing, and we never came up. So that's why I can't just say, let's do it that way, because I've seen it not work. Now, again, it didn't apply to me. Everything I brought up to the mayor has gone through, don't get me wrong. I do admit that, but I've seen it, and when it isn't, if, when a systemic failure presents itself, it can apply to anyone, and that's why I'm bringing this up.
Counselor Gunn.
To Counselor Archer's point, though, would it be prudent to have basically both systems, where any one person could ask for something to be on the workshop, but like you said, if there is a situation where perhaps there is either, whether you want to call it pushback, or just disagreement with the city administrator or the mayor, then issue beyond there, that's when you have, that's why you would have not only just the right for one person to request it, but two, your compromise, or three, depending on how you originally wanted it, can compel it regardless of what the CEO and the chair basically say. I mean, having them both, wouldn't that not be?
In your words, compel is the best way to present, I just didn't use that term, but, and that's why I wanted three, to get almost majority on board before it actually takes up time on the floor.
So we can see that it would be prudent to have both systems. Either one person can offer something, and either one of you can say, okay, and if there is ever a situation where a counselor feels like they're not getting their day in court, for lack of a better term, although we are quasi-judicial, though, so it's not a weird term to use, we have the two or three.
It's a tool available if needed.
So nothing, so something will always get talked about if there's, if there is interest.
Mm-hmm, and a second represents, the two counselors represent the second vote.
And if, I'm addressing the chair, but would it be prudent to have both of those systems?
Yes, 100%.
There you go. I think we got something here.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Remember, the amendment to the amendment was to reduce it from three to two. On the amendment to the amendment, any further discussion? Roll call vote on the amendment to the amendment, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment to the amendment passes, seven zero. That brings us to the amendment in totality, and that is to add into section, add into, under section seven, city council meetings, item nine-two, that workshops may be held one Monday per month as needed, or with the request of the minority, two counselors. Any further discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The amendment passes six-one. On the rules and order of business as a whole, now amended, any further discussion? Counselor Johnston.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, something I've advocated for some time, and I would just like to thank my colleagues for hearing me out this time around, and hopefully approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Rules and order of business pass, seven zero. Brings us to item F on page 115 in your packet, one reading, a fee schedule update. Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Finance has worked with code enforcement to update cannabis fees under chapter 135, and to establish an escrow deposit amount for Zoning Board of Appeals under chapter 83, cost recovery. Be it ordered that the council approve the proposed amendments to the city of Saco fee schedule, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item 10, new business, and that is item A, page 133 in your packet. It's an informational update, the Saco Water Resource Recovery Project entering construction manager at risk, CMAR Phase.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Counselor. Thanks for having us. Last fall, the city issued a request for qualifications soliciting contractors to bid on our upcoming project. The city ended up interviewing two companies, and it was decided to go with MWH Constructors, whereas they just recently completed the main water facility in benefit, and came highly recommended. They also recently completed another project in Tops, some water district, and they were very happy with them. We are currently looking, looking to sign a contract as advisor contract with them as early as next week to move to the next level. Currently, the engineering stands at 30% design. This includes over 150 drawings and basic equipment and specifications and details. Once we have MWH on board, we will move to complete 60% design of the project with input from the contractor to provide value engineering services. Their input will be valuable as it relates to the constructability of the project and cost savings. Also with this comes what we call a GMP, or Guaranteed Maximum Price of the Project. Now, this could be one GMP, or it could be multiple GMPs based on the phasing. Once we have those final numbers, I will be coming back to you for discussion as we move forward to the next steps. That'll probably be early summertime, we should have a good price. Concurrently, we have also been approved by the Maine Bond Bank for a loan of $50 million. That includes an extra $1 million of principal forgiveness that the Maine DEP awarded us. So we'll be signing the paperwork for our first draw of $5 million at the end of the month, and, Mr. Mayor, you will need to be at that meeting on that Thursday, if confirmed. And as you've also probably heard, we secured an extra $5 million last week in Congressional District Brendan, thanks to Senator King and Representative Colin, Representative Pingree, coupled with the 3.9 million we got last year from Senator Collins, puts us at just about $10 million of grants so far at this point. So I think we can be pretty proud of ourselves for securing about 20% of the project. So with that, open up to any questions you might have. Then we got a little video to show you that has been put together on how the upgrade may show out, or we can do that first, and then go into questions.
Let's, let's proceed with the video, and then take questions after.
Okay. There's no sound associated with it, so. That's the way it looks today, that's correct. There's the old Public Works garage right there. That's going to be our new tank, our new treatment plant. That's going to be a new headwork facility. That's going to be a new influent pump station. There's going to be a new storage building to replace the old Public Works garage. It'll be eliminated, become green space. We'll be rehabbing the admin building for future growth. Along with the added green space around the Riverwalk, as you know, we'll be redoing the boat ramp on Front Street, and adding bathroom facilities down by the new treatment plant.[1775.63] So basically, that's where we are really at 30% design. I think as we get a little bit farther into it, we're going to reach out to the conservation commission a little bit, and maybe the arts commission, what we want to do around the tanks and some of those things going forward. Hopefully, we'll be at that point in spring, summertime.
Thank you. One of the questions I have, where will the electronic station go from where it is today? Because I know that's an issue where.
Oh, the electrical?
Yeah, where it's in the flood.
Yeah, it was kind of on that drawing. Well, you know where the old public works garage is, it's getting down for that new tank. It's going to be just in front of that, just out of the public. That's going to be very elevated.
That's going to be out of.
That's one of our long lead items. It's very hard to get transformers and electrical equipment right now. So we're trying to, let's see, Emily can stop it once we get to that area. There's the garage coming down. Okay, see that green building right in front with the green roof so far? That's going to be the electrical building, and our generator is going to move over there to support that.
And is that out of the floodplain?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Even that whole front street is coming up like four, five, six feet. Everything's all being elevated, as you can see.
Thank you. Any questions, counselors? No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
We'll see you at the end of the month. That brings us to page 134, item B, billing and collections policy. We will hear from the Glenis Salas, Director of Budget and Fiscal Analysis, and Jerry Mathen, the Finance Director.
Hello, good evening. So as you can probably see in the new action items section of the agenda, we have quite a few policies to go over this evening. So I prepared a brief presentation to help guide this part of the conversation, and let's see if my computer cooperates, because it just decided to shut down. All right, there we go. Okay, just starting up. So there's quite a number of policies and ordinances under review with council. The next couple of council meetings, these items will appear again. Under normal circumstances, a one-off policy update would not require even necessarily presentation under new business, but I felt that since we were kind of going through all of the policies and ordinances all at once, it warranted beginning our discussion in the new business portion of the council agenda, so that for the more complicated updates, the council had some additional background information before being asked to vote on these items. Okay, for those who are members of the viewing public, if you wish to follow along with this presentation, it is also available on the city's website under the more items section for this evening's council meeting. Let's see if we can get it to Zoom. Okay, so I titled the presentation, Annual Governance Review. The reason I called it governance rather than policy update, ordinance update, is that we were having conversations about multiple levels of governing regulation, so I thought the word governance was a bit more broader and would sort of cover everything that we were talking about tonight. I did look up the definition of governance online, thanks to Webster, and that definition is the act or process of governing or overseeing the control and direction of something such as a country or an organization. Internally, I would say the governance that applies specifically to the finance department, the purpose of that is to align finance department operations with citizen and council priorities and ensure that the assets of the city are protected from law, loss, theft, or misuse. That's really our primary goal with these regulations, is to ensure that we are protecting the assets for the citizens of Saco. So like I mentioned, when we think about governance in the city of Saco, there are multiple levels of governance that control how the finance department operates. At the highest level, we have the charter. The charter is approved by the voters. Those amendments to the charter come up on occasion and are voted typically in the November election, although sometimes I believe they can come up in the June one as well. The next level down is your ordinance. So ordinances do not have to go before the voters. They can be approved by the council, but two readings and a public hearing are required. Next level down, we have our policy, and policies typically are a bit more specific as to how to administrate city ordinances. Those are also approved by the council after one reading. What goes into an ordinance versus what, what is covered by policy, that has been fluid. So a great example is the employee handbook or personnel policy. That was written into the ordinance at one time, but we found because of how regulations change so often, that it made more sense to be in a policy where we could more specifically detail all of the regulations and requirements that we expect of our employees, as well as to lay out benefits, which can change annually. So a policy is typically more flexible and more specific than your governing ordinance. Below policy is our internal control documents. These are most commonly used by our auditors to assess whether there is any internal risk. And when we think about internal control and prevention of fraud, the idea is no one person is doing everything, because if you're doing everything, it becomes a little bit easier to hide. So segregation of duties is typically something that auditors look for. They look for that in our internal control documents. Part of the reason internal control are not typically published publicly or voted on by council, first of all, is that it has to do with sort of the discretionary oversight of the management of the finance department. That's part of what this council and the citizens pay our finance leadership to do, is to kind of understand where the fraud risks are. It's also of value to keep certain documents internal so that individuals with ill intent can't sort of see what our processes are, mask themselves as a member of the finance department, and steal from the city that way. So that's why internal control documents tend to be internal and tend to be mostly reviewed by our auditors and finance leadership. They are, of course, available for FOA in the case that a citizen wants to see what those look like. And then finally, the most detailed bottom layer of our governance is SOPs and directions. These are very fluid, they change fairly regularly, but they are critical to ensure consistent documentation and facilitate smooth operations, especially in the case of an unplanned absence or turnover in the department. The next question you may be asking yourself is why? Why are we going through, you know, 100, 200 pages worth of policy? Well, the first is, it's important to review these on an annual basis. We want to align our local regulations and policy with changing state and federal law. And the state is passing laws every year, the federal government is passing laws every year. So on an annual basis, it's important to review our policies and ordinances and make sure they still comply, and where there have been significant changes in state or federal regulations, make sure that we fold those into our existing policy. It's also important to align with market changes and updating best practices. We've had a global pandemic, we've got historic inflation right now. Those kinds of massive market changes have an impact on how the city operates, and it may be the case that a policy needs to be revised so the city can be more responsive to market conditions. Next, we want to remove duplicate or excessive requirements. So sometimes with the best intentions, we set these rules in place, trying to prevent fraud or risk, and then it turns out what we're really doing is just creating a lot of paperwork, whether that's paperwork for the finance department to administer or for our departments. We want to make sure that we are minimizing risk while at the same time making sure that staff time is geared as much towards executing on council directives, citizen requests, meaning customer service needs, as opposed to doing anything that could be considered duplicative or excessive. And sometimes those things only come up after you've had a policy in place for a year or two, experienced what it's like to adhere those regulations, and then it's time to go back and adjust. Another reason is we want to add controls for identified areas of risk. Maybe there's a hole in our policy that we weren't covering appropriately. Something's come up that we haven't explicitly addressed, and we want to make sure that we support our, our employees and leadership with policies that allow them to operate inside of a really strong control environment. So if something comes up, okay, we need to address it, let's do a policy revision. And then finally, we want to align roles and responsibilities with staffing changes. The finance department has had an organization change. Some of our other departments have had some organization changes, so it makes sense to go back through and make sure what was written before that organizational change still makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, let's revise the language. Are there any questions about governance or why we're kind of entering into this process? So for this evening, we are covering two layers of governance, ordinance and policy. As I mentioned previously, internal control SOPs, those are more internal documentation for the finance department, and although there is some significant language in charter, especially governing the budget adoption process, I didn't identify in my review any necessary changes to that language, so there aren't any changes being presented to you this evening. Okay, so the order of the presentation is a little bit out of alignment with the order in your packet. So if you're following along in your packet, the detail of the ordinance reviews is there, and the ordinance reviews start on page 198. So if you want to skip there in your packet so that you can kind of follow along as I go through the chapter revisions. And as a reminder, these chapter revisions, these ordinance revisions require two meeting and a public hearing. So these are going to come back before you a couple of times before approval. So the first chapter that we're revising is chapter 4-14. This is part of the city's administrative code, and it covers specifically the Department of Finance. So like I mentioned, the finance department was reorganized to create two director positions to sort of share the load of responsibility in managing the department. So this revision to chapter four reflects those changes. There were also some minor changes that were made to the organization of the finance department, just some language that had become outdated and had been outdated for a while, so we revised those. Are there any questions about the chapter four language? Sorry, I'm scrolling here on my tablet so I can get to page 198.
I just wanted to add a real quick while you're scrolling. You two are doing an amazing job, and this, this new structure that we put in place is working out really well. We've seen some great results among all the staff, so thank you to both of you for doing the job that you're doing. That's all. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that, Brian, and I would say Jerry and I have really enjoyed working with each other. I think the structure has been a big relief to myself personally, to be able to have that level of support for each of us to be able to focus on different portions of the responsibility management of the department, but also to have really strong support for each other as we work through different things that come up. And especially thank you to Jerry, she also looked through all these ordinances, and we worked together on these revisions, so. Okay, are there any questions on the chapter four updates? Chapter 15. So chapter 15 addresses broadly several of the funds that the city has, asset forfeiture, the Lucia Kimball, the city trust fund. Specifically, these revisions target, were about the unassigned fund balance. So the first change was to add matching funds for grants to the list of qualified use of surplus. There has been a significant, one might say flood, of federal grant funding into the government environment, thanks to the Infrastructure Act that was passed in 2021, the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed in 2022, as well as, of course, ARPA. So as a result of that, we've started to lean into what the opportunities might be for the city of Saco to pursue grant funding, and one thing that came out of our initial discussion is the need for a reliable source of grant matching funds. Federal funds, they may require 10, 20, even 50% matching, and I believe the unassigned fund balance is an ideal source for that because use of fund balance, it's not a recurring tax obligation, we're not levying taxes from our citizens, and currently, the city's unassigned fund balance is well above the two months mandated by the ordinance. I shouldn't say well, but it is forecasted to hit that target, and so any surplus, I think grant funding is, is an appropriate use. There were also just some minor technical updates referencing to other funds. Specifically, there are a couple of funds laid out in the zoning ordinance. When the zoning ordinance was revised, the references to the zoning ordinance were not revised, so that's just a minor change. Are there any questions on chapter 15?
Counselor Hatch.
Just a broad comment. I'm pleased the effort to seek out matching grants and what have you. When there's money there to be had, we need to do whatever we can to get control of that for the benefit of our taxpayers, so thank you.
City Administrative, Kenrath.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say we have placed a renewed emphasis on going after grants. We have a new internal staff grants committee that I think Quan is sort of heading up, so this, this is a priority for us, and this is just sort of one more use at our disposal. I think it's important if we really want to make a serious effort in going after grants and those opportunities, that we accept this change, I think Quan has put forward.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so a more significant update here is in reference to chapter 81, so it's interesting that chapter 81 actually did come up earlier this evening. Chapter 81 has been a little bit of a challenge for the city for quite some time. I think the most significant challenge is that if you read the language of the ordinance, it's actually directing the planning board to compile all the information, prepare a report for council, and they are hard workers on the planning board, but compiling information and collecting feedback from staff, it's not really sort of appropriate to their function and sort of how they operate. My recommendation, and this conversation actually started quite some time ago, but my recommendation to Brian was to direct economic development to sort of manage the sale of city property. It's a good fit with economic development's natural understanding and connections with the business development community. It designates a particular staff person to sort of shepherd the process, and it can be a lengthy process, so it's important, I think, to have a designated individual at the senior staff level to manage that. As a sort of response to, you know, this is additional responsibility to put on the economic development department, my recommendation was that the Economic Development Fund be designated to receive surplus proceeds from the sale of city property. So of course, any, any arrears, sewer fees, any arrears taxes, those go to the correct funds, but then after that, surplus funds go to the, to the economic development fund. So this sort of creates an incentive structure for the economic development department to progress the sale of city property. Specifically, there's a property the city foreclosed on Buxton Road quite some time ago, and there's just been a challenge in finding the staff capacity and resources to get that property sold. So I think this is a, this is a good solution. And I did work with Tracy DeJardine, our new economic development director, and she felt that this was a really good fit as well for the economic development department, and happy to support the city in shepherding the sale of city property through the process. Finally, I think in summary, this just does ensure proactive oversight of the sale of city property on an ongoing basis, which would be a benefit to the city for sure. Are there any questions about these changes?
Counselor Johnston.
That's how much a question. I mean, I appreciate the work you've done on all these. I quite often pierced, pierced through the code and have definitely noticed a lot of these issues or things that don't align, but, and I understand where staff's coming from their perspective on chapter 81, but from a council perspective or a counselor perspective, and again, one that has gone through at least 10 of these in my time, again, I understand the thought of the mechanism of where these funds go, but from a council perspective. of where these funds go, but from a council perspective, I feel like this shackles council. And I've had instances as a counselor where we have sold property and we've wanted to do a specific need or desire with that, and that was afforded to us. Under this proposal, we are funneling funds into the Economic Development Fund and ultimately losing a vast amount of areas we could put this money towards, whatever our goals are. And given that ultimately we're selling property that has come into possession of the city, which is ultimately the people's property, I have found the current structure of councils directing where those funds go to be, one, again, when we go back to the optics of things or the perception, people want to know that counselors that they elected are making those decisions versus kicking things down to the staff level. So that's just my initial thoughts on that. I haven't had a full opportunity to go through the, find toothed cone on some of these others, but I certainly have seen a lot of changes in 10 years to code and have, at times, feel as though we've lost key elements that used to be included that are no longer included due to prior changes. So I'm always a bit weary of change after change after change. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
Okay, so the last ordinance is Chapter 175, Senior Tax Relief. This was a big initiative implemented last year. There was a year-one language in the ordinance because in the first year, the council wished to make a bridge between the prior senior volunteer program and the adoption of some state relief programs related to sort of funding taxes for senior citizens in need in exchange for a lien on the property. So since we were doing these chapter revisions anyway, I went through and removed all of the language for year one of the program, and I also did find an overlay reference, which I also removed because this council doesn't budget overlay. We budget the full amount. Overlay has to do with rounding and the setting of the tax rate, so I just took that out of the language. Are there any questions about 175?
Counselor Berman.
Just a real simple question. I noticed the title is Article 1, Senior Citizen Tax Work-Off Program, but it's no longer a work-off program. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you for that second look. We'll make sure we remove the work-off piece of that as well.
Any further questions, comments?
Great. Okay, so now we're going to jump back up to the policy section of the packet, and we're going to start with billing and collections. So there were the minor changes to billing and collections. Billing and collections broadly covers, as it states, the process of billing, as well as any collections activity and reconciliation processes associated with it. I'm trying to find it myself. Can I scroll back up here?
134.
135. So the revisions here cover addressing the statute of limitations for collections. So in the state of Maine, the statute of limitations for collections agencies is six years, and a best practice for collections, even if you are the primary debt holder, is to more or less follow state regulations as regards to collections agencies. I do think after six years, any outstanding debt, the best approach really is to write it off. So we add that, we added that language into billing and collections. We also explicitly addressed electronic payments, and that the City of Saco does not accept cryptocurrency as payment on any bill. We designated the tax collector as being responsible for personal property follow-up. This is an insight, as we sort of worked through this policy, and Jerry came on board, that it did make a lot more sense for the tax collector to be responsible for the follow-up steps related to personal property taxes. The original policy had said Finance Director. And then the policy now designates the Director of Fiscal Analysis to be responsible for reconciliation. So one of the things that's great about having two directors in your Finance Department is that you have one director who sort of oversees operations and management, and a second director with a high level of skill and auditing and internal control background, who is then auditing procedures. So under the responsibilities of the Director of Fiscal Analysis, that's where we sort of put reconciliations, and the Finance Director is responsible for operations. So that's laid out in this policy. Are there any questions on billing and collections? Yes?
Yeah, just a couple of points on our packet, page 137. And this is under Paragraph 1, and it's bold-faced in italics. Departments will complete their own invoices and forward a copy of the Finance Department. And I'm just curious, most of the organizations that I've dealt with have done centralized invoicing. Gets into the internal control issues that you alluded to earlier. And I guess I'm curious as to why we have a decentralized billing system.
Yes, that's a great question. So the interesting thing about municipal government, as opposed to many private sector enterprises, is that unlike a private sector enterprise, which typically does maybe one or two things, you know, you're a construction company, so you build houses, or you're a, you know, professional security company that provides security, we actually offer security in a paramilitary, you know, department. We have medical services and emergency response. We have, we have recreation, we have childcare, we have landscaping in the form of parks, and we have professional services. And of course, we have construction, because we have public works doing roads. So because we have these operational units that are so unique in how they manage their business, both purchasing and invoicing is much more decentralized than what you might find in a private sector enterprise. That being said, we have had conversations about whether the existing invoicing process was the best approach. Our old, the old version of our ERP software did not have actually an formal invoice that you could print off, and so we sort of had decentralized it to the departments. Now our updated software does have an invoice form that can you print off when you enter something into our billing system. So this decentralized invoicing process could be revisited. I don't know, Jerry, if you want to, if you have any thoughts on that or?
I don't think it's a bad idea except for something.
Yeah, it's the, it's the risk of human error with many hands. You know, you forget to bill, you forget to, yeah. So I'm just thinking of it from a true revenue generating, so I trust, trust that you'll take a look at that and decide what needs to be done. But also, in Paragraph 4, last sentence, tax collector will deposit all cash receipts within seven days. I'm assuming we have security, safety, vaults, whatever, but I would, I would ask if it would be possible to find a process that could accelerate the frequency of deposits, or in actuality, are you on a daily deposit basis, and you have this caveat simply to prevent it from extending more than a day or two?
Yeah, most typically, especially on, you know, during tax time, those deposits are happening daily. On quieter periods, maybe once every couple of days, I would say it's extremely rare to wait seven days for a deposit.
And is remote capture a part of the process? Today's technology can allow you to make deposits without having to go to the bank, particularly if they're in the form of cash, I'm sorry, in the form of checks.
Yeah, we do not have remote capture right now, because our banking institution is only two blocks from city.
Okay.
So the lift to implement that, as opposed to just walking two blocks down, hasn't been significant. Should the city revisit or go to RFP on our banking services? It certainly would be something we would consider in the portfolio of services, because if the banking institution is any more than two doors down, and you have, let's say, a million-dollar deposit, now you're talking about a little bit of fiscal risk. So it's certainly something that we would consider if we were to go RFP on.
Great, thank you.
Is there a counselor that wants to be the liaison for this item when it comes up? Counselor Hatch, thank you.
All right. Any other questions about billing and collections? Great. Okay. Next, capital improvement policy. So there weren't too many changes to our capital improvement policy, but we did sort of update again a little bit of the process, just to reflect what the ongoing internal processes for developing a capital improvement plan. We also did update the definition of a capital asset. Gatsby recently updated their definition of a capital asset, that a significant purchase of many smaller units that exceeded the capitalization threshold should be capitalized, even if each individual unit is below the capitalization threshold. And of course, a high-profile example of that would be the computer replacement project that Information Technology is currently working on. That's going to be about $200,000, maybe a little bit more, over two years, and we will be capitalizing the purchase of all of those laptops in compliance with Gatsby standards. Are there any questions about changes to the capital improvement policy?
Is there a counselor that wishes to be the liaison for this item? Counselor McPhail.
All right. Next, disposition of city property policy, specifically city property that is not real estate. So real estate disposition is covered by Chapter 81. Disposition of city property is covered under policy. So the most significant change here was to simplify the process to sell property greater than $10,000. Because of inflation and the significant increase in the value, especially of used vehicles, originally, the process for a property greater than $10,000 was that it had to go before council, and council was to designate the process. And because of our flexibility and ability to sell these vehicles fairly quickly on OpenGov or GovDeal, some of these online platforms, to have to go through some, a lengthy process with council was going to inhibit our ability to get a really good price on the asset. So that's why we're sort of pivoting this a little bit, but we did want to make sure that we publicly dispel, publicly disclose the disposition of assets of such a significant value. And so in this case, we did still mandate that the city administrator must announce in advance the sale of a city, a city capital asset valued greater than $10,000. Are there any questions about disposition of city property?
Seeing no questions, is there a counselor that wants to be the liaison for this item? The disposition of city property, not, not land. Counselor McPhail.
Okay, grants and external support. So this one's been a long time coming. It was something, oh, I apologize, my computer has died. It was a longer council meeting than I had anticipated. So I will, I'll go off of the packet, which at this point is in the same order as what I was going to review with you. So the grants and external support policy, there's a couple of things going on with this. The first piece of it, as Brian had mentioned, we are, we do have an internal group, and we are working to have a more action-oriented strategy with regards to grants. So we revised the policy a little bit to cover that, to make sure the Finance Department is looped into any grant activity, since the Finance Department typically does have a significant role to play in acquiring those funds and some of the reporting follow-up. We also included in this policy what has in the past sort of been an offline conversation with some of our local entities that receive support as part of the annual budget appropriation process. So I did have an internal document that laid out this process, and I've taken that internal document and integrated it into our grants policy, and then changed the name to Grants and External Support. So entities that wish to receive funding from the City of Saco as part of the annual appropriation process have something that they can reference online to see what the process is, what's the timing, what's the application. So all of those steps, as it relates to the budget process, have now been included in this policy. Another thing that this policy does is it increases the requirements for reporting for entities that receive external support. And this is something that has been flagged from conversations that came out during the budget process last year as sort of an important priority for the Finance Department to hold those entities receiving external support from the City of Saco to the same very high standard that we hold for those who may be sub-receipients of grants or recipients of grants. So I have included supported entities in this policy and have sort of laid out very specifically what the reporting requirements would be on an annual basis. Are there any questions about grants and external support? Yes?
Counselor Hatch, and Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. In a prior life, I was a treasurer for a supported entity, and I think it's fabulous that you've memorialized the requirements in this document. I think it just brings clarity, consistency, and everybody's on the same, same page when you have to submit a request. So I want to give you kudos on that, and I also am pleased to see the insertion of some sort of fiscal reporting so that we can make sure we can monitor this money's being spent for the purposes for which it was intended. So thank you for getting that in the policy.
Counselor Johnston.
Yeah, along the, along those same lines, I'm just happy to see that we've created some kind of oversight on these supported entities, because I've watched them expand quite a bit since my first year on council, and it's, again, going back to the optics of things, it's good to have that level of oversight. So thank you for doing this.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Any counselor wishing to be the resource on this item? Counselor Hatch?
Okay, so next policy, investment policy. So these were pretty minor changes in general. We did update the language to align better with operations. The objectives have been simplified. I believe in the original policy, there were, there were seven total objectives. So in some of those objectives, you get to seven objectives, and they start to compete with each other. So based on my experience and conversations I've had with council over the last couple of years, and conversations I've had with our new investment advisor, Mr. Jabahari over at Morgan Stanley, I sort of cleaned these up. And, you know, what was removed is maintenance of public trust and the city's financial prudence. I think maintenance of public trust is, is not an investment goal. I would say it's a goal of governance, and governance is something that we're addressing and sort of reviewing all of these policies. I also removed the line about diversification to avoid incurring unreasonable market requests, simply because there are very limited investment vehicles made available in this investment policy. It's basically US government securities. And so I would say where we're not allowing the Finance Department to invest in stocks or bonds or in the private sector, then there isn't a whole lot of market risk that needs to be, that we need to be concerned about. And I don't think we're diversifying really significantly where most of the qualified investments are either FDIC insured or securities of the United States government. So it just wasn't really a priority of the investment policy if you read through it. So those two were removed. What does remain, of course, is compliance with regulations, preservation of capital, absolutely, maintenance of sufficient liquidity, liquidity to meet cash flows, of course, maximization of funds available for investment. So we're working on that, and we're looking at payment plans and payments to supported entities, trying to maximize what's available for investment, and then, of course, to generate interest income, which offsets tax increases. Delegation of authority, so this was some feedback received from the prior adoption of the investment policy. So we have added, the city administrator, qualified, designee, retains secondary oversight over investment transactions to ensure compliance with policy and all applicable regulations under the City of Saco structure. The authorized designee would, of course, be the Director of Budget and Fiscal Analysis, and Finance Director Muthern and I work closely together on what our strategy is, and we're in constant communication with our investment advisor as well. Finally, again, kind of circling back on investment diversification, change that to investment management. We talk about diversification, again, the city, the city- Again, the city, the city's investment strategy really is highly targeted towards U.S. government securities, which are generating a significant return at this time. And so, when we think about diversification, where we all are mostly in treasuries, diversification looks like your, how long until maturity, it looks like callable versus non-callable, et cetera. There was another request about, to address divestment. So, in the case, the city needs to divest any of its holdings due to sudden changes in financial position. Such divestments should be done in a manner that minimizes principal loss, of course, and in collaboration with the city's investment advisor. The last significant change is to put more requirements in place regarding review of banking institutions. This was a recommendation that came out of my review of the GFOA best practices with regards to treasury management. They do recommend that you're regularly reviewing the financial statements of your banking institutions, summary reports, and some kind of standardized reading for your financial institution. So, that language has been added, and then we'll look to implement that in the coming year. Are there any questions on the investment policy?
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just a couple of things on page 170 of our packet, which is part of the delegation paragraph. I think you gave me the answer that I need to hear, but I'm just going to throw it out there anyway. I think it's always a prudent step to have two people sign off on a transaction. So you've put the authority with the treasurer, and I have no problem with that. But if I were the treasurer, and I'm executing trades, I think I would like to have somebody else sign off officially with me.
Yes, that's a, that's a great point. So, in the city's operations, if it were to be a check, and it's not a check these days, but if it were to be a check, there are two signatures on the city's checks, the city administrator and the finance director. For any ACH or wire transactions, there's also dual authorization required at our main operating account bank or savings bank. And so, in the wire transfer to our investment firm, there were two authorizations on that. What I can do is circle back on U.S. Bank and just verify that there's dual authorization required on any return wire funds.
Perfect. That would handle that well, and it's more of a protection thing than it is a worry about a process. And then, if I could just scroll down to page, get there here, it's 172 in our packet, Section I, selection of banks and savings and loans. I'm not sure, but I don't think there's a savings and loan in the state of Maine. You might want to revisit the language. Instead of that first sentence saying selection of banks and savings and loans, you might want to just categorize it as a financial institution, and then you don't have to, you know, handcuff yourself amongst those two choices. And I would assume in that realm of institutions could potentially be a credit union and credit, potentially, I'm not saying it will be, they are not a member of FDIC, so you might want to, a federally insured institution. NCUA is the federal insurer for credit unions. So just, I don't want to get you stuck in a rut and not be able to make a move. Thank you.
Great.
Any further discussion? Is there a counselor that wishes to be a liaison on this item? Counselor Hatch? Brings us to Item G, purchase, purchasing policy, page 174.
Great, okay, so purchasing policy. The biggest change in this policy is to increase the small purchase threshold from $3,000 to $5,000, and the large purchase threshold from $10,000 to $15,000. This change reflects updates to uniform guidance micro purchase threshold. So, uniform guidance is what the federal government puts out as requirements related to the use and expenditure of grant funds. We, in general, align the purchasing policy with uniform guidance so that the city is never having to think about, well, are these funds federal or are they local funds? We just comply with uniform guidance across the board. Uniform Guidance updated their micro purchase threshold from $3,000 to $15,000. Micro purchase basically means the recipient is at their discretion for how to spend the funds in any way. We still wanted to make sure that, you know, from $5,000 to $10,000, there is your intermediate purchases requirement, which is at least two quotes from qualified suppliers, I'm sorry, from $5,000 now to $15,000 is your intermediate purchase, which is at least two quotes as well as a sign off by the finance director on all invoices. And now, $15,000 and above, that's your threshold for public bid, and city administrator and finance director approval of the invoices prior to payment. The inventory requirements near the end of this section, it was sort of reiterating some capital asset language that's in the capital asset policy. So, took all of that out and just referenced the capital asset policy for the management of capital assets, which are inventoried centrally by the finance department as well as by specific departments where there's a need for a capital asset-specific management software. And then, department, below the capital asset threshold, departments are kind of responsible for inventorying and managing their supplies on their own. And the city does now have a new direct invoice entry process, which replaced some somewhat onerous and duplicative requisition forms and then manual entry. That process has been cleaned up, and so this policy is updated to reflect that. Are there any other questions?
Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was reviewing Section D principles, I mean, it's great that when possible, we use minority, women, disabled veterans as enterprises, when possible, and again, encouraged. Is it possible to also include, I'd say under another section, call it four, efforts to use city businesses first? Something to that nature where we look at geographic here, when feasible. Again, the language, I like the language because it just says encourage to use. So, something, encourage to use local businesses, something to that nature and build off that as a principle, again, not a mandate or anything, but apply it as we do with the conflict of interest and the natural resources clauses.
That's some great feedback, so I'll take that back and I'll have a conversation with economic development as well about what kind of language makes sense for our local businesses to make them feel supported by the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a counselor who wishes to be the liaison on this item? Counselor Archer? Brings us to Item H, page 186 in your packet, economic development incentive policy.
Okay, economic development incentive policy. Okay, so, in the past, the City of Saco had TIF and CEA guidelines document, which more or less forms the foundation of this new policy. As part of my policy review, I did a thorough reading of all of GFOA, and I'm using that acronym, I should clarify, that's the Government Finance Officers Association. It's a national organization designed to support finance officers, specifically at the state and local level, with policies, best practices, trainings, compliance, et cetera. So they have these written best practices, and there was a whole suite of best practices related to economic development. I do think a lot of this comes out of some high-profile recent instances. This is going back a couple of years, but the Foxconn Economic Development Incentive Program, which was really not benefiting the people, I want to say it was Minnesota, but I can't remember exactly which state it was, or maybe Michigan. There was also the Amazon headquarters fiasco, where, you know, you have these cities bidding against each other. And what can happen with economic development incentives is that the economic benefits go to the developer, but the rest of the citizens and the existing businesses in a municipality have to cover the increasing costs of that new business. So what we want to do with our economic development incentive policy is to find that balance. How do we make sure that we're protecting the tax rates of our existing citizens, able to sufficiently fund the needs of our departments in a growth environment, and incentivize economic development in our community, be a business-friendly community, bring employers into our, into our municipality? So, I reached out to Economic Development Director Dejardine, and we sat together and kind of went through some of the revisions that I made to this policy. And I'll kind of scroll through the policy and walk through each of those revisions, and if Tracy wants to come up and add anything, she's welcome to do so at any time. So, purpose, legal basis, and applicability. Again, we're trying to cover TIFs and CEAs, which are the most high-profile and the largest bucket of funds that the city has at its disposal for economic development, but also cover other economic development incentive programs that may not necessarily fall into those two buckets. In the first section, the most significant change was just a little bit of update to the language on what the guidelines are. In establishing a TIF financing district, the most significant change was that the finance department is now tasked with running a forecast model on any new TIF districts to understand what is the actual anticipated tax revenues, what are the anticipated projects, how are we expending the funds from our current TIF districts? We always want to make sure, TIFs are an amazing tool, and they do save the city funds in terms of sustaining school funding while simultaneously funding capital and economic development. But we also want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where too much of our tax revenues are being sheltered into TIFs, which are highly restrictive in what you can use them for. For example, you cannot use them to fund growth and personnel, other than economic development, economic development-related positions. So new firefighters cannot be funded from TIFs. So it's an important thing to keep in mind as we, if we roll out any new TIF districts. So the finance department now has an opportunity to sort of present the numbers, and then it does still lie at the council level to determine if this is something that the council wants to enter into. The next section, tax increment financing expenditures. This was just a little bit reorganized so that the qualified expenditures were then associated with their related guidelines. The language was also updated to include capital improvement projects, which were not included in the original guidelines policy. This section is more informative than anything else, but we wanted to make sure that the language here aligns with actual state statute for TIFs. Then there's the CEA overview, so as with TIF districts. So of course, a TIF district is really about sheltering your TIF funds from the state funding formulas. The CEAs are really about tax credits to specific economic development projects. So just like with the TIFs, now the finance department is included. Our goal with CEA programs is to make sure that we are incentivizing development, that we're assisting developers with significant infrastructure improvements if those are made a requirement of the planning board and the planning approval process. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the balance of tax revenues that are coming into the city are sufficient to cover anticipated growth and expenditures related to that development. So that's the balancing act that we're trying to do here. There's a little bit more language about scoring. So there was some guidelines, and again, the reason we wanted to move from guidelines to policy is that, and I think one or more counselors had brought this up, that CEAs were approved that didn't meet the guidelines, and the response was, well, they're guidelines, not policies. So let's put a policy in place that protects the city, the taxpayers, and our future revenue sources. So, there were guidelines in the guidelines about what the CEA should cover. We worked together to create a scoring system, so one to 100, just like your test score, you're going to get, you know, we've got 10, 10 guidelines, you can score from one to 10. That creates a total score, and it gives the council just a sense of like how this CEA is going to perform. Any scoring measure, any, any guidelines, you know, you can, it's up to the person who's bringing this particular project before council how it scored, but at least we're putting some real hard numbers in association with the project for council to consider. The last section, I think I've covered everything here. It's a little bit of a hard document to read because so much got moved around. The last section is economic development incentive programs. That's really just a quick paragraph. More or less, we're just putting it out there that you don't have to go to CEAs every time to incentivize development. You can do grant programs, you can do revolving loan fund. There are other ways to bring in economic development that don't obligate the city for future years, right? What's hard about a CEA is it may go out for 10 years, and we don't know in 10 years what the condition of the city will be. But we know this year, next year, within the next five years, we can have a pretty good sense of the city's capacity for particular incentive programs. So, there's nothing too technical in this section, and we're just saying, hey, there's something to be considered here as an alternative to CEAs. And then, it does recommend the same scoring guidelines for an economic development incentive program that is recommended for the CEA. Okay, so that was a lot to put out there for economic development incentive policy. Are there any questions?
Counselor Hatch?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just one overarching comment, having been a party to development of policies, guidelines, and procedures in my career, there's a boatload of work that went into what we just had here before us this evening. And I'd like to echo Counselor Johnson's earlier comments. Thank you very much, a lot of good, hard work, and I feel really positive about the changes that you brought forward, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
I'll be the echo again. Again, just thank you. I think that for many years that I've been up here, I've raised issues with how subjective we use TIFs and credit enhancements. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction, so thank you.
Is there a counselor who would like to be liaison? Counselor Johnston? And I believe that completes all of the ordinances and policy discussion for the evening.
Yes, it does. These were all presented under New Business, so they will be coming back around, policies, one reading, ordinances, two readings, and a public hearing, so you'll be seeing those on upcoming agendas.
Is there any, is there a counselor that was willing to be the liaison on Chapter Four, the Chapter Four updates that we talked about earlier? Counselor Hatch, and how about Chapter 15 update? Chapter 15 update? Counselor Gunn, thank you. And how about Chapter 81 updates? Counselor Berman, thank you. And how about the senior tax relief updates, Chapter 175? Counselor Berman, thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation, all your hard work. That completes the new business items of tonight's agenda, and that brings us to Item 11, administrative updates. Senator Administrator Canrath?
All right, thank you. A couple of quick items. Goose Fairbrook. As you may know, Goose Fairbrook is designated as an urban impaired stream and subject to a watershed management plan that was developed in 2016. Since that time, the city has implemented several initiatives and projects throughout the watershed with the ultimate goal of improving the water quality of Goose Fairbrook. For the latest update on Goose Fairbrook watershed, please visit the city's website, public works page, Goose Fairbrook watershed plan, and the 2022 Goose Fairbrook watershed update. Hybrid meetings. As approved by the council in the last budget process, the comms department has been working with IT facilities and Stone Mountain Sound to convert the auditorium to be suitable for potential future hybrid meetings. Equipment has arrived, and this work is being scheduled at our contractor's earliest convenience. The work primarily involves installing new equipment that will tackle audio and visual challenges of the current configuration. It'll have supplemental benefits as well, such as improved wire runs under the floors and stage, which will improve reliability and quality for our digital displays. We look forward to providing an improved experience for our community's public meetings in the council chambers, and we'll provide further updates as we move forward in the process. I'd like to recognize a few members of our fire department, EMS Luke Bibber, Carl Finley, Bryce Newman, and Adam Rogers recently received certificates of commendation from Maine Medical Center for Exceptional Care and Professionalism in caring for a cardiac arrest patient recently this past August. So thank you to all, and congrats on your award, and we're proud to have you on our fire department team. We have a bid solicitation invitation I'd like to just put out there. The City of Saco was soliciting bids for precast concrete boat ramp planks. Bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked Camp Alice Boat Ramp Planks. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 24, 2023, at the finance office at Saco City Hall, and there will be a public opening of all bids received at that time. Any questions can be directed to our harbor master, Dan Chadbourne, at his email address or by or by calling the number listed here, or Duncan Miller, who is our project engineer at Civil Works New England. Lastly, I'd just like to point out, it hasn't been overly publicized, but today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So thank you to Saco PD, the men and women there who serve the community every day and all the work you do. I see Chief Clemens here. Thank you to the chief as well, for all the work you do on a daily basis to protect and serve our community. So thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
Any questions for City Administrator Canrath? Seeing no questions, moving on to Item 12, Council Discussion and Comment. No council discussion and comment. That brings us to Item 13. Be note that Item Three, C, Economic Development, will not happen tonight. The item is not ready. So if there's a counselor that's willing to read in the rest of the executive session, that would be greatly appreciated. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRS A Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, 1, C, Acquisition of Property, and 2, A, Personnel Matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on entering executive session? Roll call to enter executive session. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to enter executive session at 9:01. Executive Session will be downstairs in the conference room, and we'll take a five-minute brief recess before we convene. Okay, we're back from executive session. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call to adjourn, excuse me, to exit executive session. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to adjourn at 10:27 p.m. Item 14, Report from Executive Session. There's no report this evening. That brings us to Item 15. Alan Tana, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to adjourn at 10:27. Have a good evening.